Uh, yeah, it's number eight. No, no, no. Yes, yeah.
Am I what?
Laura, is this one?
Yes, that's on.
Is your microphone on?
I don't know, is it off?
Call the meeting in order. Those care to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and opening prayer. Mr. Cameron, would you lead us in?
Yeah. Let us pray. Dear Father, we just thank you for this day and we'll thank you for this city. We just pray that you'll continue to show us guidance and direct us in all that we do and all that we say and just thank you for all the employees and the people that make up this community and guide and direct us for tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I know it's hot. No, we can't do anything about it. We're just all gonna have to deal with it, I'm sorry. If it makes you feel any better, I'm wearing a coat. Doesn't make you feel better at all. All right. So, we're gonna start off with some mayor's announcements. I'd like to reappoint Charlie Johnson to the Housing Authority for a four-year term. And I'd like to reappoint Cynthia Hyder to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term. They both agreed to re-up. Guy's public service, as half the room knows, is not particularly easy, and I do appreciate their willingness to serve. So, thank you very much for your continued participation, Charlie Johnson and Cynthia Hyder. I'd now like to open it up for citizen participation. This is for anyone speaking on something that is not on the agenda. So, if there's something on the agenda that you wanna talk to, we'll deal about that later. But if there's something that you wanna talk about that's not on the agenda, please approach the podium, announce your name, your address, and you will be given three minutes to speak.
I was found out.
Terry, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Terry Mooneyham. My address is 1733 East Charles Street.
How are you doing tonight, ma'am?
Pardon me?
How are you doing?
I'm doing just well.
Excellent.
And I'm also privileged to be the president of the Historical Society. And we have our museum on Main Street. We could ask a lot of questions about what the city's doing on Main Street. We have a lot of people that want. And so, I don't like rumors, so I thought I'd just come out and ask the people in charge of what the plans are for the built, old built building that used to be a car dealership and a jail. And then, if you have any other plans for Main Street that is in the works.
I also don't like rumors, but what I also don't like doing is trying to answer questions I don't know the, all the answers for. So, if this would work, could we put you in touch with somebody that could sit down with you and talk exactly all the way through all these items? Can I give you our vision and we can go from there? Would that work?
That'd be perfect.
Excellent.
We'd like that, because we've heard everything from you're tearing it down to it'd take one million to fix it, two million to fix it, you're gonna make a parking lot, and I said, "For what?", you know? And we just wanna keep Main Street as viable as we can, because it is our historic center of the community.
So, what I would suggest is that we, the reason I'm looking at my paper, the next council meeting's August 15th. We will meet with you before August 15th. If you don't like what we say, you come back and tell us about it.
Even if I, even if I like it, could I come back?
You're welcome to come back. We just don't get a lot of those.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. David, you'll get somebody in touch with it?
Take care of it.
Perfect. Anyone else wishing to speak to something that is not on the agenda? All right. Seeing none, that closes citizen participation. We will move on to the consent agenda. There are items three, four, five, six, and seven on the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda unless there's discussion.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Boards, commissions, and committees scheduled. The August 3rd Board of Adjustments Meeting has been canceled. We have a Planning and Zoning Meeting on August 14th, and then a City Council Meeting on August 15th and August 22nd. I always ask you, because I always forget, where are we doing back-to-back right there?
Mr. Mayor, that's because that's when the assessments are done through Green County, and we don't get them. We have to have them approved by this council, and they are not delivered to us from the county until the second meeting, and we have to move that back in August, so.
We do it every year.
It's not a delay by the staff, it's just something I believe that the county has had delays on, and so it forces us to change our, our calendar.
Excellent. Thank you. You're welcome. So, August 15th and August 22nd, like we do yearly. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-19 by title only, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Staying.
Motion carries for the second reading, six to zero to one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 17.19 acres of real property located at 3020 North York Avenue from agricultural AG to heavy industrial M2.
Thank you, ma'am. I know we have a lot of interested people here tonight. It is our tradition not to allow speaking on second reads, because council has done their research, and I anticipate they know what to vote one way or the other. Are there any updates from the city, though, about this particular ordinance?
No updates.
Thank you. I would now need a motion and a second for the final passage of 23-19, please.
Motion.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Please click Refresh and cast your vote.
Looking for a pen.
And then hit Submit Vote. The ordinance vote is three to three to one. In order for it to pass, it would have to pass by five members voting yea. That has not been met, so the ordinance fails to pass. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda, I need a motion and a second. Oh, and if you were here just to watch that, you're free to leave. You don't have to stay for the whole thing, I'm sorry. Item number nine on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-20 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving the final plat of the Stone Creek Falls Phase One subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff presented on this. Are there any additions?
Yes, thank you.
I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-20.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Please.
Try again. Try again. Try. You gotta touch it one more time.
Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to new business, this is item number 10 on our agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-21 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Green County, Missouri for road striping services.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Garrett Brickner, Assistant Builds Administrator. So, what this intergovernmental agreement with Green County would allow us to do is partner with them when they're in the area striping their roads. They're able to stripe some of our roads that are continuous with county roads. For example, Sawyer Road from 97, from Farm Road 97 to Route MM, Boston Lane from Missouri 174 to the City Limits, and a few others. The anticipated cost is fifty-eight, or excuse me, $5,808.38. However, the city would be responsible for paying actual incurred labor, paint, materials, stuff like that from the county. So, when we get that invoice, we'll have the actual amount. It's the same way we do our developers' agreements, so.
Questions from council?
Just a general question. West Hines from City Limits to Mo. 174, is the City Limits being Highway Z?
No, this would be West Hines, so the other side of town, actually.
The other side, okay.
Unfortunately. I wish they would strip the whole thing.
So, my thought was that the roundabout that's currently going, this striping has nothing to do with the roundabout. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
No, the contractor for the roundabout is responsible for striping that.
Okay. Perfect.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 11 on our agenda, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-22 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving the final plat of the Iron Grain Plan Development District Phase One.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Chris Taber with the Builds Department, Principal Planner. The Builds Department is requesting approval of the final plat for Iron Grain District One, I'm sorry, Phase One of the Iron Grain Plan Development District. The plat would legally divide approximately 14.62 acres into two lots, and it includes stormwater easements and access easements. The final plat conforms to the development plan for Iron Grain Plan Development District approved on February 22nd, 2022. The Builds Department has reviewed and recommends approval of the final plat and determined it conforms to the requirements of the approved development in the city's final plating code. Staff's recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Questions from council at this point? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 12 on our agenda. We just decided to do all these at once, huh? Sure. All right, let's do it. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-23 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving execution of a developer agreement with Turner Residential Holding LLC for the continued development of the Oak Hills Phase Three Residential Subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Taber.
Good evening. Staff is seeking the council's approval to enter into a developers' agreement with the developer of the Oak Hill subdivision. This will allow the deferral of construction of street and water system improvements during the construction of Phase Three of Oak Hill subdivision in exchange for partial funding of the deferred items. The agreement would secure funds for specified infrastructure proportional to the percentage of the lots being developed, in this case, 34.07% of the entire subdivision. The infrastructure being deferred consists of 1,464.5 linear feet of 10-inch water main and 1,328 linear feet of collector-class road and related sidewalk. The total estimated cost for the deferred infrastructure is $802,957.34. The portion of this cost being secured through this agreement, which is 34.07%, comes to[806.02][806.03]$273,567.57. If approved, the agreement will supersede a previous one covering Phase One and deferral of the same infrastructure elements. Staff's recommending approval of this agreement, and obviously, I'm happy to go into greater detail on any of this information.
Questions for, from council at this point? What do you think we should be going into more detail over? When you said that, I was like, "Uh-oh."
It's just a lot of information. If there's some questions about the particular elements of infrastructure being passed over, you know?
You just wanna talk about infrastructure, don't you? This was like your bait to get me to ask questions about it.
I'm up here for another two items, so I'm not baiting you into talking.
Any questions from council? All right. Please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next council meeting if you do have questions. Mr. Taber, don't go anywhere. Item number 13 on our agenda, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-24 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Laura, you good?
No.
All right. Who had the first? I did, sorry. And who had the second?
Thank you.
All right. Laura gives a look, and I'm like, "Oh, we better slow down for a second." All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately four acres of real property located at 1192 South State Highway MM from agricultural AG to heavy industrial M2.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Taber.
Susan Binie has submitted an application to rezone four acres currently zoned agricultural to heavy industrial M2. The land currently occupied, is currently occupied by a residential dwelling. The character along this portion of MM is in transition as agricultural zone properties continue transitioning to commercial and industrial uses due to the nature of MM as a connective node with access to I-44, James River Expressway, and US-60. This rezone is consistent with the city's adopted plans and with the trend of development in the area. Both water and wastewater systems have capacity to serve this site. Both systems do require expansion to the site before service could occur. Staff is recommending approval of this item.
Questions from council? Does a floodplain there cause you concern at all coming across the MM area?
It would only, it would only cause me concern during the design of the project, and that will, that will be dealt with during the design of the project.
Very good. Other questions? All right. Seeing none, please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting. If you do have questions, item number 14 on our agenda, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-25 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 1.1 acres of real property located at 2314, 2318, 2326, and 2330 East Timber Oak Street from the 12 Stones Plan Development District PDD to Two Family Residential R2.
Thank you, ma'am. Last one.
The Wilsons Creek Villas LLC has submitted an application to rezone four lots occupying 1.1 acres at, from the 12 Stone Plan Development District PDD to Two Family Residential R2. So, the land is currently undeveloped and is part of the Wilsons Villa, Wilsons Creek Villas subdivision. The existing PDD allows for single-family residences at those sites. The requested change in zoning would increase the potential number of dwellings from four homes to eight. The requested zoning is in line with the character of housing along east, along this section of East Timber Oaks, which is two-family residential dwellings or duplexes. The rezone is also consistent with the city's adopted plans and with the trend of development in the area. Both water and wastewater systems are in proximity to the site, and the city has the capacity to serve. The detention area that serves this property is designed to handle the requested change, and staff is recommending approval of the item.
Questions from council? How far down the road do duplexes go? Because those two lots next to it are duplexes, right?
It goes quite a ways. That entire subdivision is all duplexes, all down.
These would be four more lots of duplexes on that district?
Yes, so it would be a continuation of what the development is on that side of the street, and also on into that other subdivision.
Okay. Other questions from council? Yes, sir.
So, the detention for this site is on the adjacent property, which is to the east, that one you can see there that's got R1H on it. It's that dark yellow property. At the bottom there is a detention basin that's intended to serve all of Wilsons Creek Villas and the Greenfield Estates, which is, again, that yellow property, which is currently building infrastructure out.
The water runs to the east, then?
Yes, yes, the water, the water will be routed into that detention to the east.
Why haven't these been developed before? Like, are there problems with these properties that they didn't wanna take on? I mean, if we're just continuing something that was already built, like, why wasn't it built before?
Oh, this is a new subdivision. This particular subdivision is a newly designed subdivision that, and we've got 29 and three more permits coming on the property up to the north. They started with that property.
I'm interpreting the map incorrectly. You're gonna say I'm dumb.
I don't really wanna end with that, but is there anything?
It's different.
Thank you, Mr. Self.
It's different ownership, right? So, the ones to the left are different owners than these.
Yes, those were, those were previously developed, you know, a long time ago, and this is an entirely new subdivision.
Any other questions? Please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to, thank you, Mr. Taber. Moving on to item number 15 on our agenda, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-26 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement with the city of Springfield, Missouri for the purchase of programming code to design an interface for transferring information from, from the Republic Police Department to the Prosecuting Attorney Management System.
Thank you, ma'am. Are you excited to present on this?
I'm.
I've heard way, way too much about this at this point, so.
I'm.
And giving the laughs in the room, because a couple of other people have too. Go ahead.
It's been the subject of some discussions over the course of several years. So, Megan McCullough, City Attorney, this is something that has been in the works on and all for years and has been needing to be done. Essentially, right now, I'm gonna try to simplify this with the help of our IT Director for certain questions, but essentially, right now, our transfer of data from the Republic Police Department to the prosecutor's office to actually get tickets filed with the court for us to prosecute them is manual. It's not automated. Many jurisdictions around us have already moved to automation, and that is basically what we're trying to do. This is a very early step in what I would call Step One and a Half of this process. To make it as simple as possible, the police department uses something called NISH, and we, the prosecutors, are required to use ShowMe Courts to file their tickets that they enter in NISH. Those two do not communicate with each other without buying expensive software or changing both softwares. So, the fix that we found is something that Springfield has already developed and implemented and has put into place and practiced and is working really well for them. And that is essentially to have program developers develop a code that will allow the two to interface. That prosecuting attorney management system, which we'll probably call PAMS, council members are probably gonna hear the word PAMS, going forward, PAMS is sort of the middleman between NISH and the ultimate destination, ShowMe Courts. And so, all this is essentially Springfield has agreed to give us a code, it is a type of programming code, essentially, nearly for free, for a fee of $10 or something, so that we can use that to build out our own code that will allow the two to communicate. So, like I said, it's step one in what's probably gonna be a four-step process or something, but it is very important that we get it done as with new officers, more citizenship, we're getting more tickets, and just workload's increasing. So, it's time, but that is the simple version. And I can answer any questions that anybody might have?
If that was simple, I don't wanna hear the complex.
No. Probably don't.
Questions from council? All right. Seeing none, please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting to learn more about the transfer between the police and the prosecutors. Perfect. Moving on to other resolutions specifically, other business specifically resolutions, item number 16 on our agenda. This is 23-R-41, a resolution of the City Council authorizing execution of a task order for engineer-owner agreement for Task Order Number 14 with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering Co., Inc., relating to the wastewater treatment improvements. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-41, please.
Motion.
Second.
Good? Yeah, there were like 18 motions, sir. Mr. Brickner.
Thank you. Garrett Brickner, Assistant Builds Administrator. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about wastewater. This item and the next item are related, so I'm kinda gonna go through both of them at the same time and then touch on the next one when that comes up as well. As part of the master services agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald, the Builds Department would like to authorize Task Order 14 with a maximum not to exceed of $60,000. Burns &amp; McDonald will assist the city of Republic in administering an internal closed-circuit television inspection of 61,000 linear feet of sewer line. So, this goes along with the smoke testing that we did last fall. Now that we've identified those, we're gonna start looking at inspecting those, and as they are found to be deficient, going ahead and lining them as we go. So, the idea would be to get contractors lined up who do both the CCTV stuff as well as the pipelining, and we'll just go until we use all our INI money for the year going forward with that. The $60,000 is for Burns &amp; McDonald to administer the program, and then we will pay the contractors separately. This is probably a multi-year deal we're looking at. We'll just go until we use all our INI money every year and eventually address most of the INI in downtown and the, the big parts that we identified with smoke testing last year. So, yeah.
Excellent. Questions on this resolution? How many years? Like, I, I know we're just gonna keep doing it until it's fixed, but do, is there any way to estimate how long this is gonna take?
It depends on, honestly, no. It's something we should probably just do consistently, so it should be more of a program anyway, but big picture, I'm thinking at least the rest of this year, next year, and probably the year after to get the, the majority of it knocked out, and then we'll just do routine stuff on our own as we continue forward.
This closed-circuit TV repair, are you gonna bring some of that video in so we can see it?
Yeah, absolutely. It's riveting.
David sits around and watches it, I bet, the way he looks at wastewater. All right. Any other questions from council?
Yeah, just, just a quick one. So, I mean, if we're pretty confident this is gonna be a thing moving forward, like, can we just build it into the budget so we don't have to approve it every time?
Yes, absolutely. So, we have $194,000 appro, well, in the budget this year to tackle INI. This'll be part of that. The other part will go to the actual linings and closed-circuit TV stuff, as well as any other repairs we do, and we'll build into our budget each year.
Right. Just using this year to inform what happens, probably.
Yeah, and with any time we're over a certain dollar amount, we bring it back to you guys anyway, just for approval.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just kind of an off question. So, the smoke testing, we're complete with the smoke testing and have found everything that we need to with that, or is there later on going to be another portion of smoke testing?
I'm not gonna say we're never gonna do smoke testing again, but for the foreseeable future, we are done with that.
Okay.
Five years from now, we may do another round of it.
Sure.
Right now, we're done, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? As this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do this evening. All those in favor of 23-R-41, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes, seven to zero. Item number 17 on our agenda, which is interrelated. This is 23-R-42, a resolution of the City Council awarding the bid for sewer flow metering equipment to Core and Main LP. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 23-R-42, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Breckner.
Thank you. So along with that task order, the city went out to bid for what are essentially sewer flow monitors that go down in the manholes and allow us to monitor flow. The idea is we're going to take measurements before and after we do the linings and the CCTV stuff to measure the net benefit after we get done doing that. We can quantify that and see how much less is getting to the plant, help us make better decisions in the future. So with that, we received two bids, of which Core and Main was the lowest at $56,092.15. So staff is recommending approval of that bid.
Questions from council? How close was the other bid?
I believe it was, it's in the packet. I don't have the exact in front of me. 68 or 69, somewhere in that range.
Have we worked with Core and Main LP before?
Yeah, we've worked with them a lot on stuff. This will be the first time we've done this with them, but they've been a pipe supplier for us in the past and general contractor on some stuff.
Other questions? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, I will call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor of 23-R-42, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes, seven to zero. Item number 18 on our agenda, this is 23-R-43, a resolution of the City Council authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with Modern Tractor Supply Company and Lawrence Lipscomb for city's use of certain real property as youth recreational league practice fields. Sorry, I had a hard time reading that for some, I don't like the, never mind, we're just going to move on. I need a motion and a second to take up. Who wrote that title? Nah. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 23-R-43, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you start, is it more, are you more nervous to speak up here or in front of 15,000 people at Have a Blast?
Here, absolutely.
Really?
Yeah, if you get me in the formal setting, it's a little bit more difficult. Out there, I can just.
You're doing great.
All the way, so. Appreciate it. Garrett Klein, Recreation Superintendent and Athletics. Republic Parks and Recreation has identified the need for expansion with practice facilities, particularly for youth soccer. When we began to conduct a search for some land, there were two parcels, particularly the parcels that are joined here by .91 acres for City of Republic property. So two acres, each being 3.41 acres, culminating in 7.75 acres. That land is currently owned by Larry Lipscomb and Modern Tractor, and we've agreed to a memo of understanding with them to lease that land for no fee for utilization of youth soccer practice facility. With that opportunity, youth soccer practices would go from three locations, conducted down to one location. This could be a full build-out of what perhaps the spring of 2024 could look like for those practice facilities. And again, this is strictly for practice facilities. In the fall of 2023, if the opportunity may be there, maybe utilize half of that acreage, approximately the west side. So if you guys are looking at your boundaries here, you've got Illinois Avenue, Frisco Boulevard, Colorado Avenue, and of course, where we're currently located, Republic Police Department Station. So it is our hope that we can move all of our soccer practice facilities to one adjacent location so that it is significantly easier for those soccer practice facilities, and of course, removing all practices from JR Martin Park. And with that, the staff is recommending approval.
Mr. Breckner.
Mr. Mayor. So my question has to do with parking. Are they practicing on Tuesday nights, for example?
Yeah, absolutely. So practices will be conducted seven days a week for spring and fall sessions. We do have spring and fall sessions. They're typically three-month sessions. With that being said, the fall, we have approximately 60 teams. However, those practice slots are significantly reduced when you take it through seven days. So practice slots are approximately an hour. Many of those teams, particularly yellow field teams, as you can tell, it's the smallest fields, those are toddler fields that are not primarily used. They're often, I guess I should say rarely used by many of those teams. So we would probably be looking at approximately three to four teams maximum practicing out there, and as you may know, for older practicing teams, drop-off is very common, whether some people want to do those drop-offs or not, it's pretty common. Through my search here, Frisco Boulevard has the opportunity for some parallel parking, 10 slots on that western side, 10 slots on the eastern side for parallel parking there at 26-foot in width. So 10 spots is pretty conservative as well, based upon my measurements. And the north side of the Republic Police Department Station parking there on Civic Boulevard, there are 30 slots, particularly on that north side. So that's 59 slots alone, and then another 29 on the south side of Civic Boulevard. So you have the opportunity there for parking nearly 80 cars, just based upon that alone. And there are potential opportunities for local businesses that may be able to work with us for parking.
For carpool or?
Yeah, absolutely. Illinois and Colorado would strictly be no parking zones, and we would make that very clear in communication.
Garrett, did you go out there with a tape measure and measure?
Some of it I did. GIS, thanks to you folks.
All right. I love it, man. I could totally see you out there with a tape measure. Sorry. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I had another question. So do we have kind of an estimated cost? I've driven by there, you know, other than the little hump in the road that goes across there, do we have any sort of an estimation on cost on what it's going to take the city to prepare the fields for use?
Not a direct financial report on that. Our maintenance teams were working with us, and one of their stipulations in terms of that search was to ensure that we had land that was going to be easily transferable from, you know, items such as perhaps farmland. Thankfully, this opportunity does not give us that battle. So this land is pretty quickly, you know, an opportunity that we could convert to soccer practice fields with our parks maintenance team, and many of them having that expertise in natural grass, natural turf management, they could easily have it going by fall, and the financial impact would be minimal.
And restrooms, portable restrooms will be on site?
Yes, portable restrooms will be on site.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I desperately want to call this for a vote. I think this is a great thing, and I'm glad you guys have found this. I think it's going to be, as a parent that's struggled through that myself, I know that's an issue, so I'm glad the city is doing something to resolve that for our citizens. All those in favor of, this is resolution 23-R-43, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries, seven to zero. Moving on to item number 19 on our agenda, this is 23-R-44, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to extend its services contract with.
He's tall.
Yeah, he is. With Red Act LLC for professional advisory services. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 23-R-44, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Nelson, Deputy City Administrator. This is a contract extension with Red Act LLC, who is our advisor when it comes to all things funding related to wastewater and securing money through the state. So this extension, and I believe is the second extension, this is a not to exceed of 100,000. The ROI has been very favorable for us, so as the council's aware, when the governor signed the last state budget, we received another 25 million for our wastewater projects from the state totaling 50 million. So at a not to exceed of 100,000 for 50 million in return, I think we're doing pretty good. I would categorize this advising service as crucial when it comes to navigating the legislature, meeting with the right people, and crafting your language in a way that makes it through the legislative process. So we're recommending approval.
Questions from council?
You say not to exceed 100,000?
Correct.
Just to clarify, the 100,000, the resolution says 175,000 because that's the prior 100,000 and then an additional 75,000. So I think they combined the two.
Okay. Any other questions on that issue? Well, as this is a need and something that's worked out very favorably in the past, I would like to immediately call up for a vote. All those in favor of 23-R-44, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries, seven to zero. Moving on to the final resolution, this is item number 20 on our agenda. This is 23-R-45, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to execute a fourth addendum to the agreement for financial consulting services with Maximus LLC. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 23-R-45, please.
Motion.
Second.
Laura, are we good?
Second.
All right. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Bob Ford, Finance Director. Maximus is the operating arm of Larry Brown, who you all know. The city engaged Larry some six years ago. He has provided significant financial consulting over that six-year period, both supporting the existing team, as well as in times of staff reduction or gaps in staffing, he has provided significant financial oversight. This resolution allows us to add about $10,000 to the existing budgeted amount that was approved by council, which will carry us through the end of the year. We'd like to use Larry on an ad-needed basis. He provides an extraordinary amount of institutional knowledge, as well as GASB information, Government Accounting Standards Board information. So he's a great asset for us. We'd like to be able to tap into that resource. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Questions from council? Seeing none, I will immediately call for a vote. All those in favor of 23-R-45, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries, seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be back and see everyone. Thank you for the crowd that showed up tonight to visit and watch what was a very short but long meeting of materials, so I want to commend the staff for another great job. One of Springfield City Council members was actually in the audience in the back. I think he's also an engineer representing one of the cases tonight, but I was going to thank him for the participation in Springfield to participate in that discussion between the police department and the prosecutor's office, and Chris Crosby with our IT Department. I want to thank all the group. I think they worked through that relatively quickly, and the impact to the citizens and the community is substantial. It cost us an enormous amount of money to process the way that we do, and so finding a path forward, I just want to commit, there's been a lot of discussion over this, maybe even intense fellowship over this for some time, but I want to thank the city of Springfield, Derek and that group, and for our employees that pulled that together. It was no small task. I made a note, Larry Lipscomb, those that don't know, Larry Lipscomb actually donated the property that we're sitting in. So when this police department was built, there's adjacent property to us. Mr. Lipscomb and his family have been very good to this community, and for him to offer to provide a piece of property for free to utilize for soccer, I cannot let that get overlooked in this audience and on the record, that he's been very good to work with us. I know Andrew's worked with him, even on the property that's been secured next to our regional park or sports complex out in that area. So it's safe to say that our programming is growing exponentially to the fact that we've got the need to have one-site facility, but what I admire is that you didn't come here and say, listen, let's go buy a bunch more land, or let's go try to find a way to make that happen without saying, we've got to have this now, we're going to stop soccer. It's that all-or-nothing approach. I just appreciate staff's approach to go finding something, but also Mr. Lipscomb just stepping into that capacity, I mean, right adjacent to it, and Garrett Klein with the whole 62 and 32 parking spaces, I mean, man, you definitely get the Rain Man event up for tonight, buddy. Guys, a great job. In your packet tonight, Andrew's already mentioned the fact that we received an additional $25 million from, $1 million from the state legislature. This is not ARPA money, this has actually been budgeted into the general ledger, so or general fund, so that's another huge win for the community, but it's still $32 million short of the overall goal, what we have to do to achieve the objective. And so on my first day back, the first email I think I received was the, and it's included in tonight's admin report, it will be made available to the community. You will be able to go online and read the same thing that I read, which is what they call an anti-degradation report. I'm not going to geek out on wastewater tonight, but if you know that we've been working on this topic for quite some time, when the mayor asked me what keeps me awake at night, it's this project because it impacts the residents of our community and utility bills more than most. And so, but in that side, that report, you will see the actual costs that are actually being discussed, the options that are being discussed. I would draw your attention to pages four and five. This will be noted on the city's website, so you won't have to read all 18 pages, which I did, but when you get to pages four and five, I've noted that. Also, when you get to pages, I believe it's nine and 10, you can find a lot of the reasoning for the background for what that is, why that's costing our community. I'm not suggesting I'm going to disagree, but we are, we have until July 28 to provide comment, of which we will provide comment regarding the subject matter. Our outside legal counsel, which is good at environmental law that I've worked with for many, many years prior to coming to Republic, is helping us with that comment. We will continue to work for additional funding. We will continue to advocate on behalf of our residents for what is reasonable for us to receive $50 million at this point. Actually, we've actually received another $5 million for the water tower, so I believe we've been very successful in those efforts comparatively to other communities our size, so I commend the staff, the mayor. So yes, Royce and Company, they've helped us a lot. We've done a lot of the work as well, and so congratulations to the community for receiving. I mean, that's a big win, but it's still, pardon me, still lays there and I'm going, we're still $36 million short. So we will be going back to working the legislature again this year, and so looking forward to that discussion. And again, please, I know it's boring stuff, but all the stuff that we did tonight kind of goes through, we bought, what, $85,000 or whatever it was for flow monitoring equipment and closed caption TV. There's a long history of that within this city that goes back to what happened in 2011, that the city was under a compliance order, should have been monitoring these things, and we're just now playing catch-up to what's taking place. So I commend the staff for bringing those small little things, smoke testing and CCTV that I'm not going to watch hours of it, Mr. Mayor. And that's it. But my last. This is harder than I thought. My last announcement is a tough one, because I get to, I have to announce that tonight's Andrew Nelson's last night with us is our deputy administrator. He and I have been, we call ourselves shake and bake sometimes, but he's been with me when we've worked at the Capitol, has the mayor. We worked on the Amazon project, we've worked on MM widening, we've worked on ballot measures, as has all the staff, but Andrew, I'll never forget during COVID, whenever we had to freeze the spending, and I was short an employee, and he walked in my office and said, man, I'll step into any, any spot you need to help cover it, and we're going to freeze spending, and we're going to make sure the city gets through COVID. And no employees are going to lose their job. Remember that conversation? And he stayed there with me when we had the building shut down, and so I just want to honor you and tell you I thank you. This community thinks you've helped save them a lot of money, you've brought in a lot of different projects that, I know that there's days whenever people complain about the streets, and you knew that there was no money in the budget and it would have been cut for years. You found a way working with it. The Builds building that is out there today, you fought to get that done, but more importantly, you're a local kid. I can call you a kid. And, but you've been a real blessing to this organization, to the employees, to this community. And I just want to tell you, as your boss for a short, longer while, but as a dear friend, you deserve, I mean, make no mistake about it, when you're growing like we are and seeing the results, people want your people, and I could not be more proud or happy for him and his family. And now you can get on the social media and be an advocate or be whatever you want or show up and.
No, don't bother.
But with that, that's all I have, Andrew. You know, I love you, I appreciate you, and you're going to succeed at whatever you do, but if you come up here trying to sell engineering services, it ain't going to happen. Just kidding. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Reports from council. Mr. Breckner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's pretty tough to follow. That's, I'm still dealing with that email that I got this morning, so I appreciate everything that Mr. Cameron had to say. It's truly, I echo all of that, all of our conversations since you've been here, I very much appreciate that. You've given me a lot better understanding on some things, and so I always really appreciated having you to call, answer questions, or you know, whatever the topic was. So thank you very much, and you will be missed, but you know where to find us if you need to. Other than that, a great big thank you to everyone that played a role in Have a Blast. I've been going to that, I don't know how many years now, and every single year, there's something else about it that just blows my mind, whether it's the crowd, whether it's the food, the fun times, just getting to see people having fun sometimes, you know, being in tough positions, seeing laughter and seeing fun, it can make the entire difference of a day. I appreciate having that in our town. I appreciate all of the volunteers that made that possible, and so thanks again for another wonderful, great Have a Blast. Other than that, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breckner.
I just want to echo what David said towards Andrew, so I was there at that first lunch meeting, so having you come on board and just seeing you grow, man, time goes like that, too. It's crazy. So I wish you all the best, and thank you.
Yeah, I'll say it, too. Never, never once in my relatively short term in being in this room, in any of our conversations or any of your presentations, did you come off as the guy who was an assistant to anything? So it's not a surprise that you're just like, I got bigger stuff in front of me. I don't think anybody here is surprised by that at all either, but man, you did a lot for this community.
all either. But, man, you did a lot for this community. We're grateful, for real. And, you know, whenever K leaves, come on back. We'll, we got a seat for it.
Anyone else?
Well, I get the last word. Andrew, we've been in the trenches together, man. And we've done some really good things. And the most important thing I have to say is I'm really proud to call you my friend, you know? And I'm not surprised. No one is. The quality of your work is outstanding, and you deserve this opportunity. So I'm proud of you, happy for you, sad for us. Transitioning a little bit, David and I have had, I have to make David's life a little bit harder. So...
Please.
Yeah, well, here's the thing. I've always said I'm a husband, I'm a father, I'm a business owner, I'm a lawyer, and I'm the mayor of Republic. And I say it in that order very specifically. And it's not because I don't pride myself in being the mayor of Republic. I just, that's, that's my pecking order. It always has been. I haven't hidden that. Next city council meeting, my sixth grader is moving into, no, my fifth grader is moving into sixth grader, and I'm going to, I'm going to be here. I'm going to miss his orientation at the Republic Middle School. The meeting after that is my seventh grader's first football game, that I'm going to have to make a decision. Do I miss my son's football game, or do I come here and fulfill my role as mayor? Football games, basketball games from seventh and eighth grade, my oldest is going to seventh, my youngest is going in sixth, so I have three years of that are on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now, I know everybody in this room would be okay with moving their schedules around to make sure I could go to my kids' sporting events, but I'm not the sort of guy to ask that. So after a lot of deliberation with my family, I'm going to announce tonight, for the benefit of everybody that's interested, that I am not going to be running for reelection. So I'm going to finish out my term because I started something. I'm going to finish it. That's just what we do in my family. We don't quit. But I'm not going to be running for reelection. And it's not because I don't love the job and I don't love the people. It's just that's where it was in the pecking order. So I hate to dump that on David. He's known about this. He's not happy about this. I understand. We are also friends, and we work together well. We also, what do you call it, spirited?
Intense fellowship.
Intense. I call it fight, but you know, whatever. So I wanted to make it clear, as we talk about going into the election season, there will be seven city council spots coming up for election, and there will be a mayor's seat coming up for election. And I've made it clear, I don't care if there is no one on that ballot, I'm not going to put my name on it. And the reason is, I'm going to go to my kids' football games and my kids' basketball games. That's just the way it is. So, Andrew, it's been a pleasure. Folks, I'll finish up, but it's also been a pleasure. And with that, we do have executive session tonight. So no further action, other than announcing an adjournment by mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO 610.02. We are going to be discussing number one, RSMO 610.021.1, pending and/or potential litigation, closed session, closed vote, closed record, and item number two, RSMO 610.021.12, any document related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed. I will take a motion and a second for adjournment into executive session.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurlik?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole? Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.